The gravity pulls you straight down Earth from a bird's eye view You should grow feathers and see this too When you want to get off that darkest ground The gravity pulls you straight down When you want to get off that darkest ground The gravity pulls you straight down When you want to get off that darkest ground The gravity pulls you straight down Earth from a bird's eye view You should grow feathers and see this too When you want to get off that darkest ground The gravity pulls you straight down When you want to get off that darkest ground The gravity pulls you straight down
I'm the killer 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 In my atmosphere I breathe Revolution against the system Nothing more to fear to let for you And you will know that I'm not resisting Resisting Bruising, face hard A reaction to your miscalculation Waiting to watch the world burn Waiting to watch the world burn Waiting to watch the world burn Fighting your dreams with all your life But you're shooting against the system Whoa Thinking of sadness what you're not Free the people who's better than you Turn the world around Never gonna understand Taking everything away from me Bruising, face hard A reaction to your miscalculation Waiting to watch the world burn Waiting to watch the world burn I'm the killer 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 Get down, get down to the, to the beat Okay 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 Get down, get down to the, to the beat Okay 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 Get down, get down to the, to the beat Okay 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 I'm the killer 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 Battling emptiness Trying to get over this But the weight pulls me down Settling every fear Suddenly it left me here Pieces on the ground I can't see a reason To try to fight for meaning But you give me a reason To know I still have meaning I'm not gonna fall for gravity Cause you lift me up when I can't feel I'm not gonna fall for gravity Hearing all wasted breath Struggle with every step And I cannot get away But she was such a paradise Standing up a mile high Will you fall to give me strength? I can't see a reason To try to fight for meaning But you give me a reason To know I still have meaning I can't feel you reaching Through all the hard resistance I know that you're with me You've always got me through this I'm not gonna fall for gravity Cause you lift me up when I can't feel I'm not gonna fall for gravity Cause the world will doubt Try to bring you down But your love is real I can't see a reason To try to fight for meaning But you give me a reason To know I still have meaning I'm not gonna fall for gravity Cause you lift me up when I can't feel I'm not gonna fall for gravity Hearing all wasted breath Struggle with every step And I cannot get away But she was such a paradise Standing up a mile high Will you fall to give me strength?
Reaching for the sun I wonder where you are Oh, oh, oh We are, we are dreaming in the dark We are nothing more than dust We are nothing more than dust Search but you stay lost We are, we are reaching for the stars But we're making this too hard And I wonder where you are Mysterious, that's the part you always show Cause you're too curious Maybe you should take it slow Mysterious, that's the part you always show You're too curious Maybe you should take it slow We are dreaming in the dark We are nothing more than dust You search but you stay lost
Search but you stay lost
We are reaching for the stars But we're making this too hard And I wonder where you are Mysterious, that's the part you always show Cause you're too curious Maybe you should take it slow Mysterious, that's the part you always show You're too curious Maybe you should take it slow Reaching for the stars I wonder where you are Oh
Who I've been a million places I never see a million faces But I feel supernatural Cause the spark is electric For every part of me I feel it I know it all comes back to you I can't walk away I can't explain I'm still still in my veins You come back You control the dark, the atmosphere You hold my heart, you break these chains Cause you align with all the rhythms inside me You can unwind me I got a heart set holding me You're the center of my galaxy Space and we, that never stops dreaming, that never stops feeling Stars in the bright lights, feel the universe collide You're the pulse that awakens me Every part of the darkness is filled with your heaven In a cold that I can't believe But you're all around me My world's unfree, you're the breath that I need I can't walk away I can't explain I'm still still in my veins You come back I know where we can go I know where we can go And it's all you and me We'll kiss the sky tonight Just run away with me darling We'll get real lost, we'll get real lost again Just run away with me darling We'll get real lost, we'll get real lost again Just run away with me darling I know where we can go When the sunrise lasts forever And it's all you and me We'll kiss the sky tonight Come get lost with me 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 Just run away with me darling We'll get real lost, we'll get real lost again Just run away with me darling We'll get real lost, we'll get real lost again Just run away with me darling Just run away with me darling We'll get real lost, we'll get real lost again Just run away with me darling We'll get real lost, we'll get real lost again I know where we can go When the sunrise lasts forever And it's all you and me We'll kiss the sky tonight
Can you dig it?
We see the sunrise in front of us As our blackened hearts and stories told each other Shadows are making me sad Coming down, coming down
If it's silent in dismay, it won't break this feeling down If I conquer this my way, I devour all that surrounds If it hurts you just a little, then it heals you when it's done Disappointment is the anchor, resolution is the sun Resolution is the sun If it's silent in dismay It won't break this feeling down If I conquer this my way I devour, I'd surround If it hurts you just a little Then it heals you when it's done Disappointment is the anchor Resolution is the sun
A break, a pause I wait, oh baby 'cause I know I was the cause Every time I close my eyes I see your face I'm longing for your kisses and your sweet embrace Now you're saying you need time and that you need your space And you don't know if things will ever be the same But I will wait for you And I'll do anything that you want me to Just let me into your heart Let me into your heart Just let me into your heart Let me into your heart A break, a pause I wait, oh baby 'cause I know I was the cause Every time I close my eyes I see your face I'm longing for your kisses and your sweet embrace Now you're saying you need time and that you need your space And you don't know if things will ever be the same But I will wait for you And I'll do anything that you want me to Just let me into your heart Let me into your heart Just let me into your heart Let me into your heart And you'll ever be And you'll be And you'll ever be And you'll 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 be Just let me into your heart Let me into your heart Just let me into your heart Let me into your heart I wanna be the one who loves you I wanna be the one who loves you To let me back, let me back Let me back into your heart
We see the sunrise in front of us As our blackened hearts and stories told us to know Shadows are making me feel so Coming down, coming down on me
If it's silent in dismay It won't break this feeling down If I conquer this my way I devour, I'd surround If it hurts you just a little Then it heals you when it's done Disappointment is the anchor Resolution is the sun
The sticky VIPs alive!
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 Mine is creep while you and me repeat. This bittersweet heat is suffocating. I'm waiting and always hesitating. Kryptonite desires set my heart afire. Heart on fire. Set my heart afire. With crimson secrets and forbidden bliss. Can't stay still, don't stop that thrill. My bones crave your skin. Temptation within. Mistakes ignite the silence. Mine is creep while you and me repeat. This bittersweet heat is suffocating. I'm waiting and always hesitating. Kryptonite desires set my heart afire. Heart on fire. Set my heart afire. Connect the stars straight to the star. Intoxicating warmth. Blink or touch, these words whisper. It's my strength, set my heart afire. Ice cold, swimming against the tide. I wanna forget you. Where you're blowing in. Cause I know the ocean is far too wide. I wanna forget you. Let me forget you. Push and pull, but you repel me. We've been at this point. Love and hate, we're through the line. I give you my life inside. We've lost, but I don't feel like we've won. I wanna forget you. It's only time we'll feel. Two lives, two dreams. It's the life we do. I wanna forget you. Let me forget you. Push and pull, but you repel me. We've been at this point. Love and hate, we're through the line. I give you my life inside.
You got it.
I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I've got all the faith of the world in your hands Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming
You turn around, I feel the breeze over me You watch your dreams unfold Let it come around, and let it breathe over me It's time to go away, into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I'm calling for you The other fate of the world in your plans Guarding your faith with the palm of your hands I know, yeah, I know It's the unknown, the unknown It's time to go away, into the light I feel the calming energy I see the darkness coming And I'm calling you to hear me, set me free I'm calling for you I'm calling for you I'm calling for you
No there ain't no stopping us Fly without more than pass Couldn't catch me, I've been moving fast Call me a shooting star Then know you are Line up in a bar, wish I was a star Time to show a little charge Call me a shooting star Didn't even get to pause I said I'm moving too far, getting lost Looking at a shooting star Got more than a couple of people going mad, I swear they're rooting hard Tell them I be big in the game like she went and got them breast implants I said I'm moving too fast, didn't even get to glance I'm ready to eat up track like I'm seated in a restaurant If you had swag like mine, you know it's best to plant We are, hating because we want Shining like it's neon, rock like it's a neon Shooting stars across the galaxy I stand out, so don't be mad at me Infiltrate, I'm in my strategy When that's enough, then I just have to leave Shooting stars across the galaxy I stand out, so don't be mad at me Infiltrate, I'm in my strategy When that's enough, then I just have to leave Yeah, 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 shoot, shoot, shoot Yeah, 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 shoot, shoot Yeah, 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 shoot, shoot Yeah, 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 shoot, shoot Didn't even get to pause I said I'm moving too far, getting lost
I'm gonna throw my memories away Now I feel I'm done And I'm cursed by every day Till my time is gone I've never felt this way before And now I know this all for sure I won't forget your last betrayal I'll never forget this day I'll never forget this day I'll never forget this day Let's forget this day I'm gonna throw my memories away Now I feel I'm done And I'm cursed by every day Till my time is gone I've never felt this way before And now I know this all for sure I won't forget your last betrayal I'll never forget this day 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 I'm gonna throw my memories away Now I feel I'm done And I'm cursed by every day Till my time is gone I've never felt this way before And now I know this all for sure I won't forget your last betrayal I'll never forget this day I rise like a phoenix Born from the ashes I take care of my own Torn down where I started You can't suffocate my spirit Cause I'm the king of my own throne, my own throne King of my own throne, my own throne You'll never see me fall, fall You'll never see me fall Watch me rain And I'll save them all Slay them all, slay them all You'll never, you'll never, you'll never Still the rain And I'll save them all Slay them all, slay them all You'll never, you'll never, you'll never Still the throne Born from the ashes 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 Born from the You can't suffocate my spirit Cause I'm the king of my own throne, throne, oh, oh, oh King of my own throne, my own throne You'll never see me fall, fall You'll never see me fall Watch me rain And I'll save them all Slay them all, slay them all You'll never, you'll never, you'll never Still the rain And I'll save them all Slay them all, slay them all You'll never, you'll never, you'll never Still the throne King of my own throne, my own throne King of my own throne Watch me rain
Wow!
I feel like I fought all my life for this. This one part, this one third, I fall with me. No, just don't let it go. I started to fight, but now I'm losing. So, will I fall again? I'm scared of heights, yet it was me who ran away.
Oh, I can't forgive, can't forget myself. The peace that I'm missing, it kills me inside. I need help, oh, please give me back. This one part, this one third, I'm sorry I lost it.
Now I let my weapons fall. I'm drowning in the fears, and now I know that I will fall again. I let it go, but I can't stop to run. To run away.
Run away. Run away. Run away. Run away.
I don't want to lose somebody. Somebody. I don't want to lose somebody. I don't want to lose somebody. I don't want to lose somebody who loves me, who makes me feel so proud. I don't want to lose that somebody. I don't want to lose somebody, somebody, somebody. I don't want to lose somebody.
Do, 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 do. Do, 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 do. I don't want to lose somebody. Somebody. I don't want to lose somebody, somebody, somebody. I don't want to lose somebody. I don't want to lose somebody, somebody, somebody. I don't want to lose somebody. 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 Do, 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 do. I don't want to lose somebody. Do, 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 do. I don't want to lose somebody who loves me, who makes me feel so proud. I don't want to lose that somebody. I don't want to lose somebody. Somebody.
I heard the words in your eyes Echo of what you see Listen as it tells you of the places you used to be I saw you move through the air I saw the lights fall down I saw you come for a care If I could choose my way I heard the words in your eyes Echo of what you see
Thank God that the brothers on the rise now Endless celebrations all in my house Levitating now, I'm super duper fly now Let them boy, bet they see where I reside now Put the time in, while you always yelling "timeout" After critic, cuz I know I'm coming with it You were sitting, you were wishing I was handling my business Now I got the ball like Harry Potter playing Quidditch And my muscles are humongous, you're working that heaven's in it Damn man, I'm all that, yeah I'm all that Looking for that whip, yeah that what you call that I'ma blow up in the summer, have them yelling "fall back" And I've always been ahead, like an effing ball captain Came in the game like "whoa" Got a couple chains on me cuz I like gold They told me I'm the best, and I told them I know Cuz when I'm in your town, every ticket I sold This ain't on the man, facts bro Lot of haters, tell me where they at though I'm the new pop, all I do is rap though Want me on your song, throw a couple stacks yo Everybody wanna do the same thing That's why we ain't on the same page Do my own thing, and I maintain Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream I'm going mainstream Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream Yeah, I'm going mainstream Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream I'm going mainstream Mainstream Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream I'm going mainstream Damn Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream I'm going mainstream Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream This ain't on the man, facts bro Lot of haters, tell me where they at though I'm the new pop, all I do is rap though Want me on your song, throw a couple stacks yo Everybody wanna do the same thing That's why we ain't on the same page Do my own thing, and I maintain Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream I'm going mainstream Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream Yeah, I'm going mainstream Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream I'm going mainstream Mainstream Flow like water, so I'm going mainstream
Turn it We bout to turn it on Turn it We bout to turn it on Turn it We bout to turn it on Turn it on, turn it on, turn it on, turn it on We bout to turn it on Go, 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 go We bout to turn it on 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 Turn it 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 on, turn it on, turn it on, turn it on We bout to turn it on Go, 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 go We bout to turn it on 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 We bout to turn it on
Can you hear me? Is it working? Does my voice hurt? It working or not? Please the live check? Oh You can hear me? Oh my god, that is brilliant! I've never spoken in a live session before I hope my voice isn't too nightmarish for night? Ah! "Emery Kelly, buena perej chame" Oh guys, I actually own four instruments Guitar, piano and snare, so it's kinda hard to come up with a instrument name?
Nate, I 100% support your music talent You sound like a music genius I dunno, I only know how to play one instrument But you really sound like you have these nails So I wish you all the best
You want a bedtime story? Um... So there once was a boy named Dan And his favorite color was silver Because it was the color of the chains he wore around his neck To remind him of the dreadful death he wanted to die Yeah, you're digging it! I should change the title of this film to "Just Chatting" "Bedtime Stories with Miss Mixen" Oh my god, Dan! We should make this a weekly thing, a bedtime story You're gonna sleep so well? Is it because of me, or do you take any pills to sleep? Wow It's actually so great connecting with people Nate, are you there? Dan, I have to say, you go to bed early Like, you are a model, you are a role model I have to copy you Are you planning on waking up early and studying? I'll take that as a no 1:15, really? Yeah, that's early, isn't it? Oh, can you take me with you? Or can you at least film a vlog or something? Or send me videos on Instagram of the clothes you want to buy, okay? I love shopping! Actually, what shops sell chains? Nate, you're gonna pass out tired from the music You're gonna have musical dreams, you're gonna be dreaming of nodes How great is that? Or of hurricanes, which I hope you don't have any nightmares about hurricanes A place in Manchester? Dan, are you a goth? Like, I thought... Are you like... Do you classify yourself as a goth? Or you just shop there? Or it's just your personal style, isn't it? Affleck? No, sorry I don't want to say something very non-politically correct I'm just like, really curious I just like the fashion I think it looks great on you And whoever is watching right now, or is watching in the future Dan has a YouTube channel And is actually a really great YouTuber I love his style, he's so entertaining And you should go subscribe to him, actually That's controversial! I don't wanna get cancelled before I even start my YouTube career! Yes! Dan, I'm just, I have to say, I... I plugged your channel, but there's like 5 people watching us And the 2 is me, 1 is my mom, the other is my sister Nate, have you ever thought of a melody like... While sleeping, you've thought of a melody which doesn't exist And then you wake up, and you can't remember it? Cuz it's happened to me, and it's very frustrating You dream of music, and then you wake up, and you forget it You're welcome, Dan We still need to collab though, we need to do a collaboration video Maybe you can dress me up? We can change styles for one day, for Halloween! Nate, that's amazing, you have so much exposure to music That's why this happens And you should take full advantage of it, really Dan, have you brushed your teeth?
I play the piano, and I've tried to teach myself the flute, the harmonica and the violin And the Irish tin flute? Yep I play the piano, and I've tried to teach myself the flute, the harmonica and the violin
You have some white teeth
And the Irish tin flute?
You do have white teeth You listen to music at least 10 hours every day?
Really? You have some white teeth You do have white teeth
You listen to music at least 10 hours every day?
Really? You have some white teeth You do have white teeth
Tú tienes dientes blancos. Dan, ¿qué tocas? ¿Tomas instrumentos también? ¿Qué instrumento tocas? No sé. Como electrico o clásico. Eso es increíble. Nate estaba tratando de aprender la guitarra. Practicando su guitarra. Nate, ¿qué clase de música escuchas todos los días? Como clásica, como todo tipo de música. ¿Qué te inspira más? Tomas la guitarra y todavía tienes miedo de tocarlo en YouTube. ¿Me estás bromeando? Deberías haber captado esa oportunidad como en el culo de alguien. Oh, Dios mío. Por favor, ponlo en tu lista de cosas que hacer, por favor. Pero sí, definitivamente deberíamos empezar la banda, creo. Rock pop y rap. Bueno, no vi eso venir, para ser honesta. No hubiera supuesto que eras como un tipo rock pop. Realmente, por los sonidos de lo que escuché, pensé que serías... Un tipo más clásico. Pero sorprendido de una manera positiva. Estoy sorprendido de una manera positiva. Dan, estamos esperando tu video de guitarra, ¿de acuerdo? Una banda rock. ¿Cómo deberíamos nombrarnos? ¿Cómo deberíamos nombrarnos? La incertidumbre. No, me recuerda a los trastes que estoy haciendo. Estoy haciendo el Loco de los Trastes y hay muchas cosas sobre ellos. La incertidumbre y las rocas. La incertidumbre y las rocas. ¿Por qué me gusta el sonido de eso? La incertidumbre y las rocas. Esto tiene un buen rincón. Podríamos hacer algo genial. Seríamos la primera banda... Como por todo el mundo. Somos una banda internacional que nunca hemos conocido. Y tenemos reuniones en línea, reuniones virtuales. Y nunca se ha hecho antes. Y luego nuestros conciertos serían a través de Zoom o FaceTime o algo. ¿Cómo sería eso? También está COVID seguro. Wow. La incertidumbre y las rocas. Que ese tipo de Fox en la banda. Debería, le diré. ¿Qué instrumento? ¿Dijo que estaba tomando? No había tomado la guitarra en mucho tiempo, creo que dijo. La primera vez que nos conocemos es en los Grammy's. Oh, Dios mío, eso es muy inteligente. Y relatable. Definitivamente puedo ver eso suceder. Imagínate. Nunca se ha hecho antes. Nos conocemos la primera vez en los Grammy's. Eso es muy cool, ustedes. Seríamos una equipo de poder, para ser honesto. Tenemos a Nate, que es un genio musical. Tenemos a Dan, que es un entertainer sobre un talentoso. Luego tenemos a mí. Voy a ser el responsable del lado empresarial. Y luego tenemos a Fox, que... No puedo predictar psicológicamente lo que va a hacer. No lo conozco tan bien. Va a ser un chatty, amable tipo. Y supongo que sus habilidades de guitarra deben ser buenas. Estamos en la diversión coreana. Vamos a ganar el premio de diversidad. Puedes obtener un set de problemas legales, eso es verdad. Espero que no nos atrapen ningún problema legal, ¿sí? Dan, ¿qué estás pensando en traerlo a los Grammy's? Oh, no. Estaba pensando en drogas duras y cosas. Nate, puedes rapar, eso es increíble. ¿Puedes hacer como "Rap God" por Eminem? Eso es increíble. Somos tan talentosos. Los quirques. Deberían llamarlos "Los quirques". Estamos teniendo mucho diversión. Quiero que pueda escucharte de vuelta. ¿No hay una forma de escucharte de vuelta? Nate, puedes rapar Eminem. ¿Qué? Esto se está mejorando a la minute. Allí va mi sesión de estudio y mis notas, Dan. Ustedes, creo que... Voy a seguir en los pasos de Dan y... Hacer mi camino hacia el cuarto. Y... Llegar a mi cuarto. Y dormir. Dan, estoy esperando para llegar a 1.000 suscriptores. En el momento en que llegue a 1.000 suscriptores, estoy saludando esta puta. Poniendo mis cosas y viajando por el mundo en una lista de paquetes. Completación mundial. ¿Quieres unirte a mí? ¿Quieres unirte a nuestra lista de paquetes y luego viajar por el mundo completándolos? No voy a olvidarte muy pronto. Ative. Necesitan limpiarse. Sí, se limpiarán. Especialmente porque estoy pensando en devorar un chocolate antes de ir a la peña. Estamos muy cerca, Dan. Muy cerca. Tú estás a medio punto. Para ser justos, estás como un tercio hacia tu meta. Tienes solo dos tercios restantes. Y continúa trabajando en composicionar. Nate seguirá trabajando en su meta. Vamos a continuar trabajando en nuestros canales de YouTube. Y luego todo el mundo estará feliz. Y luego podemos reunirnos en algún lugar en una playa en Hawaii. Bebiendo cola de piña y disfrutando de nuestros millones. Ese sería el sueño, en realidad. Dan, muchas gracias por tus palabras amadas. Todavía estoy luchando para hacer buen contenido. Alguien apareció en el chat hace unos pocos horas y fue como... Lol, imagínate recibir views por estudiar. Y me enfadé porque... Todos los canales están construyendo esta idea. Y le dije, estamos teniendo una conversación real. Sabes, es divertido. Y fue como... Lol, todavía, ¿sí? Así que me he dado cuenta de ello y estaba considerando terminar el stream ahí y luego. Él no quería, pero creo que me sentí mal. Él hizo eso. Sí, en realidad, sí. Entonces, desapareció y en realidad revisé mis suscriptores. Porque pensé que sería lógico que él se desinscribiera después de eso. Pero lo hizo. No sé si se inscribirá mañana. Sí, estoy contento de hacerlo. Amo este charlando contigo. Quiero que pueda escucharte de vuelta, ¿sí? Hey, chicos. Si empiezo a subir en Twitch, ¿también me apoyan allí? Lo cual es mucho divertido. Ustedes son los mejores. Me hacen sentir tan bien y caluroso y rígido. Y Dan necesita dormir. Dan necesita despertar. Sí, 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 sí. Ok, chicos. ¿Qué crees que terminemos este stream aquí? Creo que han pasado tres horas. Sí, son tres horas ahora. ¿Deberíamos dejar que Dan duerma y yo... Despiere y Nate potencialmente practique sus instrumentos? Ok. Voy a terminar el stream, ¿de acuerdo? Muchas gracias por unirte a mí. Y por permitir que hablara, hablara mis pensamientos y escuche mi voz después de tanto tiempo... Sostando y no decir nada a nadie. Mis dedos se sufren. Sí, creo que solo necesitamos un descanso en este punto. Así que... Adiós. ¿Puedes decirme adiós en el chat para que sepas que realmente estás viviendo? ¿Puedo conseguir un adiós? Adiós, a todos. Sí. Justo como yo bailando. Adiós, a todos. Hasta pronto. Bye.